All right, cool.
Good evening. We will now hold the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. I'd like to ask everybody to rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's begin by, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted in amendment. Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of 9/11/18, the personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, the approval of the September 2018 claims, number 50962 through 51278, the Head Start Policy Council bylaws, the purchase of the Head Start bus, and a donation of $2,215.11 from Moisada to support the needs of Fayette County students. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President.
Thank you, Lori. A second?
Madam President.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to action items. The first one is the personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President, Board. We have three individuals on the agenda tonight for approval, if you're consideration. First is Darrell Drew, is our Director of Transportation. Second is Kristen Day for Developmental Preschool Maplewood. And third is Stephanie Glover, our new payroll secretary here at the Administration Building. Darrell and his wife Kelly are here, and I just want to share a little bit about Darrell. Many of you know Darrell and remember Darrell from years back, and I've known Darrell most of my life. But Darrell worked with UPS, and most recently he's been with the city, working for Parks and Recreation Department, and he is already learning and been initiated by fire a little button. I appreciate his enthusiasm and his passion for our kids and for our community, and I just want to recognize the necessity of here and submit these names for your approval.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'd like that move.
Thank you, Warren. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion?
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Collins, Administration, I appreciate this opportunity to be able to.
I'm glad to be on board.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we've got a series of resolutions, item B through I. They are all going to be described by Ms. Kellum Tollitt, and then we will go through each one of those separately, unfortunately. It's kind of what we have to do to approve each one of those, but I think Janie would probably appreciate being able to do it all at once and kind of describe each resolution. So let's turn it over to you.
Sure, we have to.
Yeah.
I'm not doing a lot of in-depth, if that's okay. I mean, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we haven't had two meetings previously and the hearings already on the CPF and bus replacement plan, so I'll just move through them quickly, but feel free to ask any questions. The first resolution for your consideration is to set the appropriations and tax rates for 2019. Keep in mind that we always advertise and approve high, and then when we get with DLGF, we work backwards off of that to make sure that we take care of our full capacity. The total budget being presented for adoption is $37,587,231, with a tax levy of just under $9 million. That is the first item. The second item is the Capital Projects Fund Plan. It is in your pink notebook in the Capital Projects section. We talked specifically about how this has changed. It's no longer a three-year plan. It is a one-year plan. Items costing $10,000 or more do have to be approved by the Board, so I will imagine during the year that we will have to make in-flight changes to what's being approved. If we need to purchase something $10,000 or more that was not approved, we'll have to do another advertisement and present it for your consideration at that time, but this is as outlined. In addition to that, the next resolution is for the 2019 Bus Replacement Plan. This is the purchase of the buses during 2019 that we anticipated. The Capital Projects Plan and the Bus Replacement Plan, if you recall, are now part of the Operations Fund instead of separate funds, so that will be unique as we start 2019. The next resolution is to establish the national funding of the Education Fund. This is an authorization for me to transfer the December 31 cash balance of the General Fund over to the Education Fund on January 1st, 2019. The next resolution is to establish the funding for the Operations Fund. It gives me the authority to transfer the December 31 balances of Capital Projects, Transportation, and Bus Replacement to the Operations Fund. The next resolution is to transfer an initial amount from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. As you're aware, the General Fund now includes expenditures, particularly maintenance and custodians. It's a large part of that. That will now be part of the Education, or the Operations Fund, I'm sorry. So this is a $1.2 million transfer after I move the money from General Fund to the Education Fund. We will then move $1.2 million to take care of like the first quarter's expenses of the Operations Fund. The next resolution is to transfer an amount from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund on a quarterly basis. The currently identified amount is $500,000 each quarter. Again, this might be an item that we need to revisit throughout the year. It will not require any advertising, but if we need more money or less money to not make a transfer, then I can bring that to you at that time throughout next year. And the last item related to the budget is what we call the Tax Levy Resolution, and that's where the Board gives myself or Scott permission to make changes with the Department of Local Government Finance so that we can cut our budget in the places that we want to match the revenue sources. Any questions?
This is pretty much particular two-state changes in our accounting process.
That's correct, yes.
The money that's transferred over quarterly, the $500,000, is that an estimate?
It's actually set amount so that I can move it each quarter. It will be on the claim stack for your approval again, but this just makes it where I don't have to come back every month and figure out an amount. We're going to move it every quarter, or if there's a quarter where I don't think we should move it, I can come back and modify that resolution with the Board at that time.
What if you need more?
Again, I can bring another resolution.
You would come back and ask?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, Janie. We will go through each of these, and I'll need a motion and a second. I will ask for discussion in case anybody has anything particular to that particular resolution. So we'll begin with the resolution for appropriations and tax rates for the 2019 budget. I need a motion.
I'll move it up.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the resolution to adopt the Capital Projects Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the resolution to adopt the Bus Replacement Plan. Motion? I make a motion. Thank you, Andy.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Okay, we're about halfway through. Resolution to establish initial funding for the Education Fund. Thank you, Ann. A second? Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The resolution to establish initial funding for the Operations Fund. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Ann. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution to transfer initial amount from Education Fund to Operations Fund. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution to transfer amounts from Education Fund to Operations Fund on a quarterly basis.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori.
A second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the last one, Tax Levy Resolution to the DLGF finalizing budget. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we will go on to Ms. Kellum Tollitt for the permission to advertise for the CHS Activity Center.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. This evening we're asking to advertise for the Congressville High School Student Activity Center. Mike is here. If anyone has any questions for Fanning and Hallie about that process, you know, after the Board's approval to advertise, assuming it's approved, on October 11th, we'll release the bids, bid documents to the interested contractors. On October 18th, there'll be an onsite meeting for those interested contractors. On November 1st, we will receive the bids and then hopefully have a recommendation to bring to the Board at their November 13 meeting. And a little bird walk on that, we've had some conversation about this project and the office project as well. So one of the things I do, I have done is we asked for a common school loan of $3.5 million. In addition to that, we have estimated that we'll use from the rainy day fund $1.5 million. So money's related to the possible office part of the project. We still have a little over $350,000 of the bond issued from last fall remaining. In addition to that, we have about $67,000 in what's called the Construction Fund. It's Fund 070 on the report, and that is where the orange sale property money went. When you have bonds, we make semi-annual payments to the bank who then pay the bonds. Over the life of those bonds, those monies that are on deposit earn interest, so when the interest comes back, it goes into this fund. Now, I have used some of that to pay for the closing costs and the legal fees related to the orange property since that would be where the money was going. So, you know, based on that, we do have, you know, over $400,000 left in that Construction Fund that would be available for Project 2. So I just wanted to share that as I thought it might appropriate at this time.
Do those funds have parameters? I mean, why was it called the Construction Fund? Is there any limit to what the money can be spent on?
Yeah, because it was identified originally for construction-type projects. It does come back and it is supposed to be used for that type of activity as well. You could probably transfer it to the rainy day if you wanted to. I mean, I would have to do some research, so if you did that, it would lose its identity and could be used for anything that you've identified for the rainy day fund.
But it's interesting that you were able to put that money from the interest into the Construction Fund. How does that happen?
Well, it was, bonds were issued for a construction project.
Okay, okay. So it's, all right. So it stays wherever that fund is, basically?
Yes, and that's the fund where you will see that fund is eventually going to run into the red because that's also the fund you use to account for like the common school loan. We will pay the bills out of there, and then I will request reimbursement from the state. So as we move into this project and start paying those bills, that fund's going to dip in the red, and then I'll file the claims with the Auditor of the State of Indiana to be reimbursed, but you have to pay first and get your cash back on the tail.
So it's got like a reverse grant, is that considered?
Yeah, that's why a lot of our funds, if you notice our fund report that I put in there, the federal government moved a few years ago, it's probably been about eight or 10 years ago now, to where you can't ask for money in advance, you have to spend it and then ask. That's why it looks like so many of our funds are overdrawn, so we're fronting them the cash, so.
Quick question, a little bit different subject on the Activity Center. Do we have any information on the Administration Office as part of that project?
No, that will not be presented to, a request to advertise for bid until January, so I believe it's December that some options will be presented to the Board for consideration. Just like last month, we brought, you know, the options for the Activity Center to you, and then this month we're moving towards asking for permission to advertise. So it's on a different, a bit of a different timetable because they are two separate projects.
And why is that?
Because of the $5 million cap.
So does it, my understanding that instead of borrowing some money, we're actually going to use some that we already have available?
Well, that's, yes, for this, but on down the agenda, I'm going to ask for that option related to the solar panel project.
Okay, okay, but we have it, instead of borrowing it and paying interest on it, we might as well throw it to ourselves.
Especially since I don't like the interest rate for today. We're going to have a conversation about it. It thrives the Board like something. That's on down the agenda. Okay.
So we're going to look at the permission to advertise for the CHS Activity Center.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. School Improvement Plans, Ms. Priscaro.
Okay, thank you, President, Board. Indiana Code requires us to submit school improvement plans for all of our elementary and high schools, and in your Board packets, you were presented with a three-year timeline for all the six elementaries, the middle school, and the high school. Just to kind of help you understand some of the changes that were made, we didn't make any significant changes to our plans this year. We're going to continue our work with the Marzano framework, which is the three levels. That's Level 1 being that safe and collaborative culture, 2, effective teaching in all classrooms, and then 3, that guaranteed and viable curriculum. So our school improvement teams worked with their staff, students, and parents to develop plans around that framework, as well as designing goals around grade level standards, Indiana academic standards, that will be assessed on the new iLearn assessment that we take for the first time in the spring. So if you have any questions, I know middle school and high school are here. If you have any questions for them, and then hopefully I can help you answer any questions for elementary. If not, I'm requesting the approval of the attached plans.
A quick question. Looking at some of the plans here for the elementary schools, the assessments are quite a bit different among schools. Some of them are still using, it looks like, you know, for, it looks like Eastview, grades K through 10, K through 2, NWEA, and then it goes up to NWEA and iLearn. I think there's, maybe Frazee was using NWEA, and then also I-Step Plus. Yeah.
They should all be using NWEA. Some of them are still probably referring to I-Step because we do not actually roll over to iLearn until this spring. So the data and the results that they're looking at now are based on the I-Step that we took in the spring, but starting this spring, the only I-Step or a state assessment that we'll be giving will be iLearn instead of I-Step.
I have a question. How long has the Marzano technical being used?
We're on our second year of implementation. The first year, we kind of trained our leadership team, which was our administrators, coaches, and team leaders within the building, and then they rolled it out to their building. So this is our really first full year of the entire staff being trained and helping everyone kind of design goals around that. It's really based on the high reliability organizations of where you constantly monitor your progress, and if there are things that need to be changed, you make those changes instead of keep continuing on the basis. So you're working towards efficiency instead of just repeating and repeating and getting the same results, so.
So how do you assess the effectiveness of this approach?
Well, the goals are written around those. The safe and collaborative piece of the framework is just really based on peer collaboration, teachers, students, parents feeling safe to make group decisions. So that's more of that safe, as well as the security piece. Then the effectiveness, the level 2, that's a little bit easier to monitor because we have the RISE rubric. We have observations that administrators are doing. You can do peer observations, and then that guaranteed and viable curriculum is just guaranteeing that every kid in third grade, whether they go to Frazee, they go to Maplewood, or Eastview, they're getting that same vocabulary, those same skills, despite what school they go to. And then that level then can be monitored by NWEA, and then at the end of the year of the spring, because it's based on Indiana academic standards, then it's assessed by I-Step, which is now going to become iLearn.
So the safety piece, the safe and security, will you end up surveying? I mean, because it's not hard facts, so.
Right. Well, when you first start out, you give a survey to your staff, you give a survey to your students, and you give a survey to your parents about different things that are going on the building. How well do you know how your school does procedures and expectations? Do you know the safety plan? Do you feel like you can communicate effectively with your teachers? Is the principal visible? And then you take all of that information, and then after analyzing it, then that's where you start to build those goals for your individual building. So it's kind of an overarching framework, but each building has different strengths and weaknesses, so they work based on their own information that they receive from the surveys.
So when you get to that point, can you share some of those results? I'd just be curious.
Sure, sure.
I don't know if other Board members would be, but that seems to be a really.
Yeah, it's a great framework, and I think principals would agree that it's helping us to kind of be more focused with some of our goals, and also helps parents and students have a voice.
Good, good, thank you.
Leslie, the Marzano implementation is starting. We've been talking about Marzano for 10 years.
Yeah, it's not, it's nothing new.
The teachers have books, pamph, whatever, yeah, so.
It's a different approach. It's cooperative and collaborative as opposed to, it's really inclusive with everyone having, instead of a top-down model, which we've had from time to time, this is really everybody getting on board and everybody working toward, everybody wants to work toward the same goal, they just have different ideas of how to get there. And this framework allows the individuals, groups involved, to reach a consensus, and it's something that everybody can live with. What I really like about this, and I've looked at the high school and the middle school and a couple of the elementary schools, I like the assessment piece using NWEA because that shows the growth model. And having just had the situation with a family member who was very upset about not doing as well on I-Step as they thought they should have, but you look at the NWEA scores and, you know, the growth is there, and you say, you're where you need to be, you've made good progress. You know, the, I really like that we're focusing more on the NWEA as a truer picture of where our kids are, because the I-Step, the iLearn, I hope the iLearn is better than the I-Step.
Me too.
Everybody does, but it's so artificial and so upsetting to kids that they don't buy into it, because for some of them, it's just a horror, it's obtuse. The NWEA is something that they get instant feedback on, you know, they know how they do, and they're excited about that. So using that as the assessment tool, I think is just so much better for, to give us a really good picture where our kids are. And again, that fits right in with Marzano, the idea, because people buy, the kids buy in, they get instant, instant feedback, and I think that that's important for them too, so. These things are a lot of work to do.
Yes, they are.
Lots and lots and lots.
This is our course. You know, this, we're not jumping on a new fat, this is our foundation where we're going. With kids in poverty, and with all kids, you know, this year we're working on our language arts standards, picking those critical important standards at each grade level and then vertically articulating those, so our high school teachers know what our middle school teachers are focusing on, and they have input. So it's a really great process. We've worked on math this past year, we're in language arts this year. We're just going to keep working through those, because I believe that if we focus on those critical standards at each school consistently, we're going to see that improvement, that growth that we're wanting to see. And so it's a, it's a good process.
Well, and it has everybody accountable for everything, you know, there were certain subject matters that were, classes that were pushed aside sometimes because of the science and the social studies, which are now obviously tested also, but they were, they were pushed aside in favor of, well, we need to spend more time on these things. So it allows, I think, more integrated type of situations, so the kids don't get through K through 6, and then they hit the middle school, and they, and for no fault of their own, or even the teachers, they've not spent the time on the science or the social study standards. By identifying the ones that they really need to know and to focus on, then you can carve out that time to focus on them.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the school improvement plans.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Permission to advertise for additional appropriations to the Rainy Day Fund, Ms. Kellum Tollitt.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, we're on to you.
So a little foundation to this. I contacted the Indiana Bond Bank to seek lease rates for us. We've used the Bond Bank before for popular leases. We could have used un-bought, and they have done outstanding work for us. We're getting some great interest rates, but if we went with them, it would have added to the cost of the project for an operating lease. So that's why I made the decision to go with the Indiana Bond Bank. They sent out bids for us on our behalf for a 20-year lease for the solar panels. They received no bids. I knew that Huntington Bank had inquired about the project, and I had forwarded some information, so I reached out to their representative and asked why. And they are capped at a 15-year maximum for their leases. So then I thought about it for a few days, and then the feds raised the interest rates. And I was like, we're going to have to pay a lot more than what was projected. So we proposed, I proposed the idea to Scott and then to some members of the negotiating committee for the Board to consider using rainy day funds to pay for this project. And so if we need, if we wish to do that, we need to do an additional appropriation. So it requires advertising. So tonight, I'm asking the Board's permission, if they want to take that approach, to approve advertising for the additional. If it doesn't lock us in next month, I will have to bring that to you for your consideration. If it doesn't lock us in next month, I will have to bring that to you for your consideration. But I would like some guidance. I did ask them what the rate would be for 15 years, 3.9% to 4%. Yeah, that's pretty salty. Now, we really have an interest, we are earning interest at 3.2% on one of our CDs. So, you know, we're also reaping some benefits of that. So I ran numbers on, you know, we could, if you decide to proceed with this, you could choose to not pay the rainy day fund back at all until we have access in the operations and the education fund, and then just make those transfers. You could just transfer the principal amount over the next several years on a month or quarterly basis back to the rainy day fund. Or you could take an interest rate of like 2.5% to pay that back, including interest that you're potentially using, losing by not being able to invest those funds today. So I'm interested in what the board might want presented after the additional appropriation request on any sort of repayment or no repayment. I mean, it doesn't mean that it can't be repaid. It would just be like we did a few months ago where, oh, we want to transfer X from transportation fund and general fund. That's what we did months ago would be the operations and education fund. So the proposal is to borrow from ourselves instead of from a lease. And if you don't like that, I'll reach back out to Huntington Bank and...
Here's a number cruncher, and you do a fabulous job, which it seems to me that if we borrow from ourselves, we pay less interest, and over the life of the project, that would save us some money.
Sure. If you bought, if you paid it back quarterly at $200,000 a year, it would take 12 and a half years just paying the principal back. If you had a 2.5% interest rate on that, it would take you 15 years and one quarter paying it back. Well, it's really 15 years at $50,000 a quarter, and then that 16th year, one quarter would be $6,900. And then at 3.9% from the bank for 15 years, you would pay $814,000 in interest to the bank. See, that's why I didn't like that number very well.
Two and a half million bucks coming out of Rainy Day. So obviously, if we pay ourselves back, we got to pay the two and a half million upfront out of the Rainy Day Fund.
Yes.
And over time, we're going to pay ourselves back the savings we're going to get from the solar panel project. So what kind of, does it put a financial strain to operate at you to go ahead and give up the two and a half million upfront as opposed to go do an operating lease that we are proposing even at 3.9%?
Well, we have a significant balance, and we are committing probably $1.5 million to the field house project on top of this. But we're not using the rainy day fund to live off of right now. We're able to manage our expenses.
Through positive cash flow, is it what we give?
Yes, through our regular funds. I can't tell you with our declining enrollment, we lost 53 students this year. I can't tell you, you know, if, you've seen my graphs of where we were, how many kids we've lost over the last 10 years. So I can't tell you five years into this that you might wish you had done something different. So, and that might be the reason to not commit to pay a repayment schedule to the rainy day, but pay it as you see funds growing in those other funds if you have them.
So obviously, you're taking a larger risk if we borrow the rainy day as opposed to taking out an operation lease.
Yep.
However, don't you reduce your risk if you do at least pay back every year? And not, you don't reduce the initial risk, but you are getting money back in there in case something came up in year four and we were paying, you know, however much every quarter, however you pay it, rather than waiting for funds that have balances that we could transfer. I mean, to me, it seems like you've got a steady stream then, and you're slowly preparing for what, a possible problem. I don't know.
And this board could say, pay it back every quarter, just say, and...
Interest or no rate.
And I do that, and then I'm gone, and several of you are gone. My replacement could say, we need to stop this. And so just because you agree to it doesn't mean you can necessarily bind future boards.
Right. But why would somebody in the future, why would someone in the future saying not, don't do this?
Because the binding enrollment had impacted your ability to pay that back out of the operations fund that you were, you know, while the enrollment impacts the education fund, we are transferring money from that education fund to the operations fund on a regular basis to support those ancillary services that become a part of the operations fund. So if there's not enough money coming in to make that, so...
So how easy would it be if we forego the, you know, two and a half million out of the Rainy Day Fund? How easy would it be for us to go out and, let's say, you know, have been a catastrophe strikes in, you know, in the coming six months or a year, whenever, and we need to dip into the Rainy Day Fund? How easy is it for us to go out and get X amount of dollars to cover that?
You cannot spend beyond your means.
Right.
If we don't have cash and we're waiting on settlement from the county for the tax rate, so you run out of cash in August and you're not going to get settlement in December, you can take out a temporary loan at the bank and pay interest for that, for the cash.
Okay, right. That's what I'm saying. I didn't want to disrupt you.
But you can't spend more than you're budgeted for or anticipated to receive with your settlement.
We can't do deficit spending then.
No.
The other part that I'm thinking about is that we know that the solar project is going to result in a cash savings in terms of not expending as much on electricity. And then that, we also will net some sort of, beyond the savings, what am I trying to say here? I'm looking at your page that says propose with no financing. So on that page, it looks like we...
That's no repayment and no interest. That's how you get to the $8 million number that they're projecting. That is savings from electricity costs and no form of repayment to anyone, whether that's outside or to ourselves, and no interest factor. So that's why that number is so large.
I guess what I'm trying to ask or figure out is, we won't be spending that money on electricity, so essentially, we're capturing that somehow.
Yes, and that's where the money would come from to make these payments back.
Right. That's how it always was going to be.
What interest?
Right, right, right.
It's just whether we borrow from ourselves or we borrow from the bank.
What interest would it use to calculate the cash flow statement for the savings? For example?
2.85, I believe.
And I don't have a problem with doing it through the rainy day fund. I think the question on the table is, I mean, assuming others don't have a problem using the rainy day fund, is are we going to pay it back? Are we going to come up with a set schedule?
Well, he redid it, 3%. But the original one, I think, was 2.85.
So even at 3%, we're saving roughly the first year $30,000, and after that, it ramps up. So the difference is really 0.9% if we were to go out and take this loan. So the interest rates that we have at 2.5% interest is obviously less than what we pay at 3%.
But you can't pay it back over 20 years either. You have to take the...
I guess, yeah.
And it could be at the 4%. So what you're going to do is that cash flow is incorrect, you're not going to have savings or want. You're going to pay more money out because at the 3 point, or 4, or whatever it is where we would go to lock in. So you're going to have higher payments for those 15 years because you aren't going to be able to spread it over 20.
That's the difference between a 20, 15, 20, and 30-year mortgage on your house.
And I think it really boils down, we're looking at a potential $200,000 energy cost savings that we won't send to Duke Energy. So we'll take that savings, and we can replenish it back into our account. So five years, potentially, we could have $1 million in savings in electric. So it's putting it in that frame, too, you know, it's just important for everyone to keep in mind that that's all of savings, we're not taking new money.
My question isn't about that. It's not a question even. I think, if I'm hearing Janie correctly, we can set up a schedule to pay back with or without interest. We could pay back with a certain amount every, I mean, until you're gone and we're gone, whatever.
First one is an estimated repayment with no interest. The next one is an estimated repayment with interest. And then I can send the one around using 3.9% from the bank.
I personally don't know that we need to pay ourselves back with interest. I just think if we pay ourselves back.
If we just pay ourselves back. We, you know...
That, I don't know. What do you think, Andy?
I think that's fine with or without. I just want to make sure that with the, you know, the field house being constructed, we have enough, we have a plan B that if something were to happen, we are able to come up with some, you know, we don't want to have an issue and the two and a half million is not there anymore for us to pull back.
Right.
You know, that, yeah.
It's about a million.
A million, okay.
It doesn't, it does not drain all of our resources. It does leave about $1 million left in the rainy day fund after this.
But Janie, correct me if I'm wrong, the rainy day fund is regulated. You can only have so much money in the rainy, no?
No, you can only transfer 10% of your levy every year.
Okay.
Of your budget, your total budget, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, you know, for this year, this next year, if our budget was approved the way it is, you could only transfer $3.7 million into that. So that's the only restriction. There's no real restriction on how much you can allow that cash to build up.
Build up. But we're limited to how much we can add to it every year.
Correct. That's where the limitations are. And we've never hit the limit. We've never transferred that much.
Has there ever been a point in the last four or five years that we've had to take out of the rainy day fund, you know, excessive amount of money?
An excessive amount?
Well, you know, the one and a half million, that would be...
No, we've done some capital projects that were not identified. The state a couple of years ago changed how we had to account for circuit breakers. And so how it used to be was, you know, you couldn't spend more cash than you had or were going to get. And they would let you have the budget that you wanted, knowing that if the circuit breaker impacted you, you had to make your adjustment. Then they said, no, when you build your budget, you have to account for that in the circuit breaker, the circuit breaker impact to that fund. So that one year, when they changed that philosophy, I had to build quite a bit of capital projects into the rainy day fund. So we use money then. In addition to that, over the last five years, I have taken all of the certified staff bridge and severance payments out of the rainy day fund. That's just under $1 million. Those will be a part of the operations fund going forward. We won't be taking those out of the rainy day fund. You know, we use that $800,000 from the general fund to restore some of those payments that we had taken out of there. We still have built a budget for it to be a go-to place, you know, for those types of things should we need them. But as there is a greater focus on the expenses of the education fund and hitting that magic percentage, whatever the legislature thinks that is, that's costs related to student instruction, we need to capture those certified staff bridge and severance payments in the education fund so that we show that as a part of our education fund expenses. I don't know if that makes sense or not, so... So, yeah, we have spent capital projects that haven't been planned for, bridge and severance payments. And as a matter of fact, the DOGF has changed their methodology again to allow us to pick how much of the circuit breaker we recognize as a part of our budget. And when I build this budget, I recognize zero because it gives me the flexibility to make those changes throughout 2019 to account for the circuit breaker. Or it gives me the ability to use cash that was left over at the end of this year to cover those expenses.
You don't pay yourself interest, pay back the principal. That saves us a lot of money.
I think we're in agreement about not paying ourselves interest. That's not the question on the floor, I know, but it just makes sense.
If the advertisement gets approved, then I will advertise. Then on the agenda will be a recommendation or asking you to approve the additional appropriation. Then under that, I need to know if you want something presented to you related to payback or nothing, just be silent on it. And if you do want something presented related to payback, do you want it presented with interest or no interest? You don't have to pay yourself back.
No, I think it's important, though, that we do set up something to pay ourselves back. It's like saving, it's like you're saving so much taken out of your paycheck every month for savings purposes. So I think it's important that we do that, but charging ourselves interest? No.
The other part is there's a chance that our rainy day fund could grow on its own outside of this, that we could have...
If there are excess funds in education and operations, I'm still going to bring you those resolutions periodically to make those transfers. That would be, that could be a part of the scope of this, to pay it back early if it's from the operations fund, or it could be a totally separate funding to the rainy day.
If we, if two years from now, through some, you know, excess funds that have been transferred to rainy day, our balance in rainy day, you know, has grown again, not to the same level, but it's grown, could we rescind our notion of doing a payback every quarter?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, you can make your wishes known that you want this resolution for a payback. But if another board comes in here, and then wants to change it, they could rescind that.
So it's not set in stone for the life of, in essence, the life of...
That's true about a lot of things. This is just another one.
Yeah, you know, same is true as any...
Yeah, but it's not like you're lying to my bank.
No, no. You stick with it with the bank, period.
The logic behind the 2.5% was you're losing interest on those monies now. So that's why I just ran those numbers, just giving you lots of choice, apparently too many choices.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion. So I'd like to seek a motion to approve the permission to advertise for additional appropriations to the rainy day fund.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Warren.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract for Performance Services to see a solar project.
This is the Janie meeting, isn't it?
It is. It's the Janie Show.
So anyhow, time is of the essence, as you're well aware, related to the solar project. Bids are to be accepted by Performance Services on October 23rd. So what we're asking you for is to approve Scott and myself negotiating any documents that need to be negotiated, once our attorney is satisfied with the contracts, and number two, provided the project does not come in in excess of $2.5 million. That does not give them much wiggle room because it's 2.4, yeah, something like, yeah, like that. So, you know, you can increase that amount if you want. So, you know, you can increase that amount if you want, but I wanted to try and hold it very close to the number that they proposed. So if it's 2.5 million that you approve tonight and it comes in at 2,510,000, we would then have to call a special board meeting to get you guys back together to consider it. So, you know, it's, it's at your pleasure what you set that number at, but this just allows us to keep the project moving so long as, you know, lawyers are happy, we're happy with the bids, and you're happy with the price.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for the guaranteed energy savings contract with performance services to CHS solar project.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. We're here a second. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, discussion items, board policies, first readings, Mr. Collins.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs, our policy committee met and reviewed three different policies. One is a new draft, and we'll go over that first, then the other two are just some revisions. And the first is concerning the use of metal detectors. It would be policy 5.29.1. And as you're aware, the state, the governor's office provided funds for schools to receive a handheld wand metal detector for every 250 students. So we have 12 of those that we received. We need policy before we begin possibly using those. So working with the Indiana School Boards Association and our school attorney, we have some language. I sat down with Leslie and Anne, and we worked on it, and I just want to highlight a few pieces of those. Reasonable suspicion is a key piece here when we are going to single out an identified student. And then our administration is authorized to use that piece of equipment. However, some caveats with that is our law enforcement officers will train our administrators on these. And with our two student resource officers who are members of the sheriff's department, that makes it really nice for them to have their guidance there if we ever have a situation like that. Additionally, we can use these devices for a group of students randomly, but we want to be careful we don't single out individuals or categories of individuals. So we want to protect people's rights. So that's important that we have language guiding us there and doing it in as minimally intrusive way as possible. But it gives us some, you know, leeway. Let's say there's a rumor that somebody saw a kid with a gun on a bus, you know, we could pull those kids aside with our administrator and SRO, and we can just double check, have them empty their backpacks. We need some pieces like that in place because that gives us some guidance on what we can do to protect their rights, but at the same time, protect our schools. So this policy lays that out. It also provides guidance on notification to parents and students through our website, through our web pages, and also through our handbooks. And then additionally, it's recommended that we provide notification at least twice during the year, at the beginning and then mid-year through our school communication tools. So we will do that. Additionally, there should be a notice posted in a central location at each school about weapons not being permitted at school. And, you know, that's something that all schools are being recommended to post those signs, so that's included in here. And then the other pieces that really talks about if we are pulling a student aside or the child refuses, what are our steps? So this provides the guidance for our administration to deal with that. So let's say a student is going, a random group was selected and the wand hits on a student, shows metal, that the student will have an opportunity to remove, make, check your pockets, check your backpack. If it continues, then the next step would be to pull that child into a private area with a member of the same sex and the resource officer. And then they would do it again, and then they would do a pat-down search to a member of the same sex. That was important to us as we discussed, both Leslie and Anne, that we, we protect that piece with someone of the same sex doing that. Can maybe that person, if we need a female, you know, I would be available too if we're in a situation, but we always want to be sure we have witnesses there and we communicate with parents. So if we want to be sure to protect kids' rights, we hope we never have to do that and pat down a student, but this, these are the provisions that protects us and it protects the students as well. So this is our first reading, and we'd like, you know, and welcome any comments now. Look over it, we will talk about it again at next month's meeting. So anything specific on this now before we move on?
Scott, do we know whether our students wear heart monitor type devices? Of course, that's in the policy that they cannot be wanted if that comes about, they cannot.
Why?
I do not remember that one. I don't recall seeing that ride.
That is not in here.
Yeah, because you can't wand, because I could throw that, yes.
Also, that, some of them that have the cochlear, the cochlear implants, oh, thank you, that's not, that's not in there.
Scott, my second question, do we have students that are confined to a wheelchair? Because there's different ramifications, because one is not going to do anything because you're just going to get indications from the metal on the chair. Those are the things I could talk to you, ways you around that, but that wasn't, I did not see that addressed.
Is there really, yeah, we needed your input, Chris. One thing, we did get, Scott showed Anne and I the wands, and, I mean, it was beeping like crazy all over me. And Anne's got metal in her body, so there's.
I've got it apart. I mean, it was, it was.
But even on me, in areas where I did not have metal, like on my lower leg, it was going off. I didn't know if that was hitting the floor. I know you had sensitive floors.
Some braces, yes.
So these are super sensitive wands that don't, I, I don't imagine they would pass your muster.
You have to have leeway. With experience, you know what a reading is from a floor choice to, you know, but that takes time.
Yeah, it was quite noisy in his office.
I had to call the police to.
My lower leg, I couldn't figure it out.
I wasn't having it on.
And I think one of the issues that we addressed in the policy meeting is we don't want to have our kids, any of us that have traveled and gone through TSA kind of thing, we don't want that. And with the piece that I did like in, and it's something I'd like you to look at the policy too, Chris, is the probable cause, the probable cause part of it, if, when we get to that point. You know, we can do it randomly, but the probable cause piece was, was really big for me, and I'd like your input on that because you've, you've had to deal, in your job, you've had to deal with that a lot. But these things were hypersensitive. It, it picked up, it picked up a rock I had in a rib 35 years ago, you know.
You know, pick up from underarm.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
That's another touchy.
Right, because majority of girls are wearing.
Well, we don't want to go to X-ray machines.
Well, that's not bad, that's not.
We don't want to go to the X-ray machines where you can see exactly.
Busy woman.
Sean, I appreciate this. That's what I first read for. What I'll do is take these back because we're, we're an unchartered territorial.
Absolutely.
When the school board association sent that, you know, getting this feedback and giving that back to Michelle to look at, because those are things, the wheelchair piece was the one that we did not talk about at all.
Well, and the cochlear, the cochlear implants, and, and we have, we have kids with prosthetic devices. I mean, we have kids with pins and plates and wires.
But I think your point was that it off, it changes that, the heartbeat. So it's one thing that it may be if you have metal in your body, but another thing, if it upsets your rhythm of your heart and something else. So I know that was your, and.
My concern, yes.
Folks with, in wheelchair.
I appreciate that, and, and, you know, it really does, I feel like, and this is a political statement, so I apologize, but, you know, this was a political move by our governor's office. We provided you these tools, and if another school shooting happens somewhere in Indiana, well, why didn't you use those wands that we gave you? I was told they're, they're very minimal quality, according to a deputy who looked at one. But at the same time, we have to have provisions in place because he's worked right, and it's an expectation of the state to, to, you know, have those available. So I appreciate this guidance, and I will take this back to Michelle, our attorney, and give you some updates here and then before the next board meeting on some clarifications. Because this is what we, we want to be sure that we protect children's rights, what is reasonable suspicion, and we protect our administration too.
I know.
So, thank you for that feedback. Any other comments on that?
Just, I was going to say, we've already had some policy, just because somebody gets a tip, a kid's got a gun, Randy calls down one of them, correction officers or whatever, and, you know, they go from there. So we've been doing this.
Searching and things already.
For many years and following, hopefully, all of the laws to the.
We have, but this adds a whole nother layer.
Right.
And we have to have our signs posted that, that it's like.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. I will follow up with you on that. Thanks for the feedback.
Hey, thanks, Chris.
Community use of schools, policy 6.07. When we were approving a request by the gymnastics center for Sunday use, one of the board members had mentioned, can we change it so we can't bring it back? So in meeting with Leslie and Anne, what, what we can do is place this approval on my desk, and then there's an appeal process if the person doesn't agree with mine, where they can come to the next board meeting, appeal to you. That's really the only significant change is it does allow me to make the approval here in our office. And most generally, the activities are few. Joanne does her gymnastics meets, but there aren't that many that I can recall, and she consistently submits that request every year. So that's the suggested change in the policy there, or your request, on putting that back in my hands. And then the third is under our registered sex offenders, policy 6.17. And we adopted this, you adopted this policy last year in May, and Indiana Code has provided some clarifications on what the serious sex offender means. And so this just, and the information in red just discusses those pieces. So found to be a sexually violent predator, convicted of one or more of the following offenses, child molesting, child exploitation, possession of child pornography, vicarious sexual gratification, performing sexual conduct in the presence of a minor, child solicitation or seduction, sexual misconduct with a minor, a conspiracy or an attempt to commit an offense described in clauses A through H, and an offense in another jurisdiction that is substantially similar to an offense described in A through I.
So that keeps the foreign shelters out, the offenders that go for place to live.
So that's the only change. This just updates with Indiana Code. So those are the three for our first read, and I'll bring those back to you next month. Any comments, questions? Thanks.
Okay. Now we'll move on to public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group's reports.
Just one thing I want to share, well, I appreciate the good feedback I have from our policy committee. We had some really good discussion, and then also we've had a really good negotiation session with our teachers, and we're pretty close to getting, coming to terms. So I think it's been a very collegial atmosphere, and I think that, and I commend our teachers' group for, you know, coming in open-minded and, and, you know, we just have, I think we had some really good discussions, so.
Okay. Principals' Directors' reports.
You ready?
Yes, please.
Welcome to your new device. The iPads have aged out, and we have replaced the board iPads with Chromebooks.
Oh, no wonder I did use it.
I didn't even try because I'm.
Thank you, Jerry.
These Chromebooks are, are called convertibles. They completely swell up around and become a tablet device as well. There is a stylus available for writing.
Wow.
It is a touchscreen, and of course, a fully featured keyboard with it as well. We're giving consideration to this as the replacement for the one-to-one at the high school, a previous collection of information that Mr. Judd conducted with previous graduates, teachers, and current students. The overwhelming piece of information we got was the keyboard was important functionality. So we started looking around. We see that this particular device is a nice transition in that it not only incorporates the keyboard, but it also incorporates the touchscreen and the stylus and the writing capabilities for our next generation. If we would have considered a similar type configuration for an iPad, it would be $90 more with an iPad configuration with a keyboard rather than the Chromebook direction that we're looking at. So just wanted to make you aware. Welcome to your new device.
It's much more, it's much more user-friendly for those of us that are techno-challenged. This is nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other principals or directors' reports? Okay, Director of Human Resources report, Mr. Collins.
Oh, yeah.
Or, or Mr. Hunt, I'm not sure who.
I will defer to Mr. Hunt.
Don't be fast, just fast.
No, my word.
Director of Finance report. Do you have more to share with us?
Just, I appreciate your support on all the projects, and I want to give an extra shout-out to Wazada for their $2,200 donation. We had the back of the boardroom filled with personal hygiene products that we hooked our elementary school social workers up with, shampoo, conditioner, soap, deodorant. We even took some deodorant over to the high school for the CHS pre-entry. So, you know, we, we help support with food, and I hope this was a real need, and I appreciate Harold's dignity for taking a pie, several pies in the face, and for the whole Wazada team for selecting our schools to receive their generous donations.
Every little bit helps.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report.
Today was our first professional teacher in-service day slash conference day, and Scott and I were able to get to all of our schools, and I just want to compliment our admin and our teachers for working hard on district initiatives as well as their own school individual goals. Everybody was working really hard, elaborately, so it was, it was a great morning. And then this afternoon, I was able to experience the CMS student-led conferences, both from a parent and administrator, and the teachers were all out, and they were visible, and they were energetic. And so I just want to give a shout-out to the middle school for all that goes into that. I personally have put in work for student-led conferences, and it's a lot of work, and they had a great turnout. So, and our high school teachers and elementary teachers are also conducting student-led conferences. And then Darrell, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Superintendent's report.
I would say I don't have anything, but you know me better. I want to start with Brian Hitzley. Brian has been wearing an interim hat like we are here with Mike, but Brian stepped up and helped in transportation here for the last several weeks, and I just, he's been responsive to things that, that we've asked, and he's helped with driver issues and parent issues, and I just want to publicly thank you. And I know he is working with Darrell in this transition too, so.
He's still helping a lot.
I expect that, but it just, we have good people supporting our kids. I'd also like to acknowledge Kelly. She works tirelessly. I'm just, I don't know where she gets the energy, but I do want you to give the board points for their health initiatives because of all the up and down hand movements tonight that should count for wellness points, okay?
Instead of drinking water up there.
And almost everyone's drinking water, so. But we just had our federal review with Ed Starr, and Kelly and Lori Boggs came back and their whole team. They grilled Lori and Leslie and me pretty good. They went really tough on Lori, but they both did a great job in answering the questions and.
Good thing it wasn't videoed, because we're writing notes, we're passing, and we're like. But it went well.
It was a phone conference with a lady from California, I believe, right?
She's very complimentary of our governing body, and had very good feedback for us, and she'll get official results in 90 days if there were no fights.
Ah, that's great.
Lori and Leslie represented you well. The final thing, this came in the mail today, and I'm just, I'll end it on this, this was really unique. Have a picture here, so they want to recognize that building.
The old high school.
Yeah, the old high school. The old high school. So I received this random letter today from Lowell George in the Brookdale Assisted Living Home in Stockton, California.
Wow.
I hope this letter brightens your day. I was at an anti-
I was at an antique store here in California and found this old circa 1925 picture card showing your beautiful high school of that era. It's pristine. It's an old-time classic for sure, so I said to myself, 'By golly, I think I'll send it home where it can be appreciated.'" Isn't that great? "Our heritage is important to all of us and should be preserved. Lots of changes, I suppose, too. Enlarge and post it up, it will cause some nice conversation." Well, I gave $6 for it, so if you want it for $7 or $8, that's sure okay. Throw in a little postage money too, if you want.
That is so cute.
"My wife used to laugh at me and say, 'If you hear from them, you'll have to take me out to lunch.'" I turned 90 years old on June 26th, and I'm still going strong, as far as I know. "I like to call my little hobby a redistribution of happiness. Our world sure needs it. Thank you, Godspeed, and have a great year educating your students, Lowell George. P.S., I picked your address off the net. My daughter says you can find me on Google, but I never look."
That is so cool.
Never received anything like that, but that pretty good.
I think we need a requisition on $8 check sent to Mr. York.
Worth of $8 is going to come out.
I need a receipt. And I can't pay sales taxes.
Nothing else, a certificate of appreciation with the Spartan head on.
Something.
I will send something, but I just wanted to share that.
That's great.
California Connors High School.
Wow.
I will end it on that.
Maybe we should send an $8 worth of stamps.
What a neat story, you know?
Yeah, that is cool.
My name.
Good chance, a World War II veteran also.
Yeah.
I may have a $10 at least.
There you go.
Yeah.
For the good of the cause.
I want to comment on the new buses. I rode on one of the new ones, and I can't remember the bus driver's name.
Carley.
Carley, yes. And I took a field trip on Friday with lots of eighth graders, and I had not been on one of the new, the brand-new buses. Whoa, it's quieter, the seats are configured differently, there's a little bit more legroom. The dashboard, as she showed me, was much more user-friendly as far as she was concerned, and had a handrail to get in and out of the bus, right on the side of the bus, which my bad knees really appreciated after riding an hour and a half on a bus with kids. But it was really fascinating, and she was so full of information about the good things about the bus, and how much she really appreciated driving that bus, and how she thought it would be safer a little bit because of the, where the engine was and the like. And she was just absolutely thrilled to have this new bus, and the pickup of it going up and down the hills toward Cincinnati was much better, because we were actually bus number two of four, and we were the only new bus. And it was like, come on, guys, keep, you know, keep on moving on. But it was really fascinating, and she was, was wonderful, and the field trip was very, very good. But I've ridden on lots of buses for probably six, never mind, 60-some years, and, and it was not an unpleasant experience for anybody, and I was sharing a seat with a rather large eighth grader. So lots of room and quiet, so much quieter, and just really, really, really a cool bus. I think it was 1806, 05? Yeah, it was great. She was great, and the kids were great, and it was just much more, much more pleasant field trip riding on those brand-new buses, so. Thank you. I told her thank you and for the transportation. That's really, it's just a better thing for kids, because it is so much more comfortable to ride on.
I just had a couple of quick, two things. One, if we all noticed, on the page, the document that Janey, on one of her many things, the appropriation for the Rainy Day Fund, if you looked at the quote that came from the vice president of Huntington Public Capital, he kind of summarized what I think we all feel about Janey's work. It was very obvious by looking at the school's financial statements that it has been well-managed, and I think that's an understatement. And just with all the work that Janey's done, I just don't even know how, well, you stand out.
You're here.
You're in your own crowd there. The only other thing I wanted to say is for those of us who are on the negotiations committee, I walked out of the meeting this week just floored with the goodwill around the table, and something that Mike Circa, I think, started, is I know I was on negotiations prior to this term on the board. The first time I did negotiations committee when Mike was here, he told all the teachers and the administrative staff, "I want you guys to sit next to each other." You don't all sit, it's not like a, you know, we're on one side, it's us and them, it's everybody sit together, and that's now practice. And to hear the comfort that everybody had to just say whatever they needed to say, there was, it was really a wonderful opportunity, so I think we've got good people all around the table. Anything else from?
There was a ton of kids running cross-country a week ago Saturday up the park.
Oh, yeah.
You know, every grade level, my six-year-old, great nephew, but, and I know Kelly, and I don't know who else was involved, Kelly Stokes, but there was, there was a thousand people over there. I mean, it was parents, grandparents, and little kids running everywhere. It was great. I think we had about 250 about kids running.
We did, and then we had some of the top kids from each school come eat, eat, this past Saturday, and parents drove, drove.
Wow.
Jersey. They had over half of our kids finish in the top half.
Wow, that's so cool.
It was really cool.
Wow, that's so neat. Okay, anything else? I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion so.
Andy, do I hear a second?
That's a take.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. I think we got a sign.